Okay, welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, March 18th, 2020. This meeting will be conducted historically and for the first time via teleconference. The mayor, all city councilors, and other participants will be dialing in from remote locations to ensure that we are all contributing to the effort to flatten the curve of COVID-19 infections. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the East Hampton City Council is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for, in the order, a reminder that persons who would like to listen to or view this meeting while in progress may do so via Charter Cable, Channel 193. Thank you. May I have the roll call, please? You're still muted, Barb. There you go.
Peg Coniff?
Here.
Salem Derby?
Present.
Omar Gomez?
Present.
JP Gazinski? Bill Lynch?
Here.
Tom Peak?
Here.
Dan Rist?
Here.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Here.
Owen Zera?
Here.
Okay, we will now stand for the, or not stand for, the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all.
Hey, JP.
Okay, I am going to mute everyone for this call, but if you would like to speak, please feel free to go ahead and do so. At this point, we do not have any minutes to approve. I also would like to, if someone could please make a motion to suspend public speak for this particular meeting. Motion and a second to suspend public meet, public speak for this meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor, we're gonna need to do another roll call vote, guys. Sorry, Barbara.
Peg Coniff?
Ah, yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Yes.
JP Gazinski?
Yes.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Yes.
Dan, Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Okay, great. And now, we would, this is the portion, it's, we'll go right into the public hearing. I realize it's not 6:15, but we're gonna continue it anyway, so, Dan, I will let you take that.
I make a motion to open the public hearings?
Second.
Peg?
Motion is second to open the public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Hey, look at that.
Oh, what's that?
Hey, I just got them all now. I got everybody.
I can see everybody.
All right, go ahead.
All right, I would move to continue the public hearing on the 25,000 from CPA funds for the inventory of historic structures to April 15th.
Dan, do you wanna set a date, or do you wanna just?
I said April 15th.
I know. Did you want to set that date, or do you wanna just leave it open?
Well, let me set the date, and then we can always continue it again when we get there. My opinion.
Point of order, I think we do have to set a date when you have a public hearing to continue. So, I agree.
Well, I made a motion, I didn't hear a second.
Second.
Okay. Barbara, can you take a roll call vote, please? Motion is second.
Okay, am I on, I can't.
No, you're good.
Am I good?
Yep.
Okay. Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Gomez?
Yes.
JP Gazinski?
Yes.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Peak?
Yes.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, Barb, again, hate to do it to you, but it's, it's a function of virtual meetings.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Yes.
Gazinski?
Yes.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Yes.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go right into mayor communications. Mayor, are you on the line?
Yes.
Okay, we'll give you the podium.
Okay. Thank you all, and thank you, each one of you, for participating in this virtual public meeting city council, so we can get essential business done for our city. Given the overall effect of COVID-19 on all municipal functions, I've directed all of our departments to prioritize public health and safety issues. Our second priority is to maintain the essential functions of municipal government operations. I would ask that you all expect that information at all levels of government is subject to change on very short notice, and we have experienced that already in the last week. We are strongly encouraging folks to stay home. This is now an extraordinarily unprecedented pandemic that is affecting all 50 of our states, hundreds of countries around the world. It, it has no particular or singular victim, or somebody who is more susceptible to it. It is crossing all socioeconomic, ethnic, and racial lines. We owe it to ourselves and everyone in our city that we need to stay home and away from folks. You do not want to risk exposure for yourself, but additionally, no one wants on their conscious, consciousness, exposing someone else, especially ones with an underlying health issue. I just wanna quickly say a couple of things about city operations. Late fees on tax collection are waived during the duration of the declaration of emergency. Ever Source has discontinued disconnections for their electric national, I'm sorry, their electric, natural gas, and water operations. I would also encourage folks to go to the city website, and on the top left-hand corner there is a banner, to click on the most updated COVID-19 information on state and federal levels. Our Health Department also has a very robust health section on COVID-19, especially for local businesses and folks of where they might be able to get services. We are updating our local guidance for residents, employees, first responders, and small businesses, it seems, twice a day, and I expect that to go up. But first and foremost, I, I really just wanna make every, sure this body and everywhere, everyone in East Hampton understand, first and foremost, we are facing the most extraordinary public health crisis in our lifetime. And I have also strongly encouraged city employees to self-isolate in their private and professional lives. I have asked for that because if nothing else, we as governing bodies of the city of East Hampton must do everything in our power to make sure that the continuity of local government stays consistent and reliable. Our nation and our state populations, populations are in an upturn of COVID-19 infections. It is the next 10 days, the next 10 days that will impact and flatten the curve of infection. Please do not make a mistake that this is a virus that can be stopped in our community, at East Hampton's borders, Massachusetts' borders, and as we well know, the nation's borders. We are now in mitigation, and we are trying to mitigate the effects of this virus on our community. The only way to do that is to follow basic health precautions, but most importantly, keep your distance from others. It's a great time to play Scrabble or walk your dog, and I encourage strongly that all of you do this, and all of our residents do as same. In closing, I will, I'll just repeat something that I send out every day, a 3 o'clock update for COVID-19, that are really highlights of what's going on in the city, and maybe changes in policy. Today, I had to suspend the 3 o'clock deadline because information is changing so quickly, I can't get that newsletter together. Literally today, we got two major updates, five minutes before three. As well, there are several calls with MEMA, as well as the governor's office and our senators. But, that said, it's impossible to acknowledge every first responder, public servant, resident, and business owner who refuses, refuses to let this pandemic emergency completely ravage our city of East Hampton. Please know that your efforts, both big and small, do not go unnoticed and are desperately needed going forward, as we have no idea where this health emergency will take us. I thank you again to this body for convening this meeting and conducting vital emergency business for the city, and would ask you all to think of yourself and others to stop this hideous infection. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. We did have a piece of business, mayor, that you had put forth around school department, human resources, business functions with the city. Did you expect that we would move that to a committee, or were you notifying us of that? And when you set, I know you wanna establish a committee to look at it, are you just informing us that you're gonna be setting up that committee, or is there, is there action by this body that you would like us to take relative to that?
No, no action by the body, but I would like the assistance of yourself as city council president, as well as the school committee chair, to help select that working group of seven, given the current health situation that we're in. Of course, I ask to, or notify that I'm gonna push that off until the summer.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we will go into reports of standing committees. Finance, Council Rist?
Thank you very much. We met on March 11th. At that time, we did talk about the Chapter 44B CPA exemption, and Council Gazinski was very kind to get some more information to the committee whenever we meet again on that We will not meet until the earliest that I suspect we will meet is April 8th, but we'll decide that at our next council meeting after we see how committee meetings can happen with public involvement. At this time, the Finance Committee did accept Chapter 40, Section 5B, 3 to 0, and if it's okay with the president, I'd like to read that and make a motion to accept it. Unfortunately, it's a long, it's a long acceptance paragraph. Is that okay, Madam President?
Go ahead, Council Rist, yes.
I move that the full council accept MGL Chapter 40, subsection 5B, to establish a cannabis impact fee stabilization fund. The council accepts the paragraph, by accepting the following paragraph, excuse me. Quotes, notwithstanding Section 53 of Chapter 44 or any other general or special law, to the contrary, a city, town, or district that accepts this paragraph may dedicate, without further appropriation, all or a percentage not less than 25% of a particular fee charge or other receipt to any stabilization fund established pursuant to this section, provided, however, that this receipt is not reserved by law for expenditure for a particular purpose. For the purposes of this paragraph, a receipt shall not include taxes or excises assessed pursuant to Chapter 59, 60A, 60B, 61, 61A, or 61B, or surcharges assessed pursuant to Section 39M or Chapter 44B. A dedication shall be approved by a two-thirds vote of the legislative body of the city, town, or district, subject to charter and may be terminated in same manner. A vote to dedicate or terminate a dedication shall be made before the fiscal year in which the dedication or termination is to commence, and shall be effective at least for three fiscal years, in order to dedicate 100% of the cannabis impact fees to the Cannabis Impact Fee Stabilization Fund Number 87. I move that we accept this chapter.
Second.
Motion is second to accept the chapter, the paragraph for Chapter 40, subsection 5B Cannabis Impact Fee Stabilization Fund. Any further conversation?
I just wanted to mention that we all felt this was a great way to make sure that 100% of these funds become available immediately when they're given to us, rather than having to become free cash and then moved. This makes sure that this money is always used for this purpose.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Barb, can you please take a roll call vote?
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Yes.
JP Gazinski?
Yes.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Yes.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
The motion passes.
All right, I have some new business, Madam President.
Okay.
The following items, I will make one motion to move to Finance Committee for review. Each item is a first reading. The first is a request for supplemental appropriation. The amount is $35,223 from excess overlay released by assessors, $35,223. Two, the Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance Liability, $35,223. The amount requested will be for the following purpose, to provide for employee share of health insurance not paid by employees in January due to one week premium holiday, provided by the city per East Hampton Education Association Support Unit Agreement. The next item is a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $100,000, to be appropriated from free cash, $100,000, to Fund 88 Tax Rate Stabilization Fund, for the following purpose, to provide funds for tax rate relief stabilization. I'm sorry. The next item is another supplemental appropriation. The amount is $100,000 from free cash, to the Snow and Ice Line Item Account, $100,000. The amount requested for the following purpose, to cover snow and ice deficit for fiscal year 2020. And the last, I'm sorry, not the last, supplemental appropriation is hereby made to cover expenses for the COVID-19 resources. The amount is $75,000, to be transferred from Number 84 General Stabilization, $75,000, to be transferred to Professional and Tech Services, $65,000, and to the Public Health Emergency Salary Account, $10,000. The amount requested will be used for this purpose, to cover expenses related to the COVID-19 resources. And lastly, an interdepartmental transfer for fiscal year 2020. The amount requested is $800, to be transferred from the Treasury Equipment R&amp;M Account, $800, to be transferred to the Board of Health Professional Services, $800. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, additional funds required for alternate inspection services to cover during COVID-19 pandemic. I move all of these be sent to Finance Committee for review.
Second.
We have a motion is second to move several supplemental appropriations to the Finance Committee. Barbara? Take a vote.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Yes.
JP Gazinski?
Yes.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Yes.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Madam President, that concludes. I will not be setting any public hearings at this time for those items.
Thank you, Council Rist. We now move on to public safety. Council Gomez?
Thank you, President Coniff. I just have one, is, I just wanna add, in front of a motion, 90-day extension for the request to reexamine the traffic lights at the Main and South Street intersection.
Second.
Motion is second to extend the, the expiration date on light item to reexamine the traffic light at Main and South intersection. Any discussion? I'm gonna take a voice vote on this, so if you can unmute yourself, since this is not really a critical issue. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
That concludes.
Thank you, Council Gomez. Council Lynch? Appointments.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee did not meet since we last spoke, but I do have a couple things there. David Fagnon, who is appointed for the Board of Public Works, was submitted to the City Clerk on 2/13, and per our charter, he has to be moved within the 45 days. That would bring him to March 28th, and our next council meeting is for one. Because of this, I'm putting forward David from the Appointments Committee without recommendation. I did speak to David over the phone, and there is some information that he provided that I'd like to share with everybody. He has lived in East Hampton his entire life, born and raised here. He has moved away for a short period of time, but moved back pretty rapidly. He loves East Hampton. He is a mechanical engineer by trade, and, and has gone to school for that as well. He loves the community and has lots of interest in it. Personally, I know he supports the community, from just seeing him at different events that folks in different organizations have held. He attends and supports those. He has had an interest in the BPW for a long time, and wants the opportunity to be more involved, and feels his background fits the BPW the best, and that he brings a lot to it. He is a contractor and a business owner as well. The only concern he wanted to add and call out was that he wanted to be upfront, that he is a merchant in town, and that the city sometimes does buy from him. He did say that he will agree to all conflict of interest forms and processes that may be needed for that, so if that was anybody's concern, he wants to make sure that he follows all of those guidelines, and he is cognizant of that. I personally have known Dave. He is a great asset to our community. I think he will do well, and has a lot of knowledge and support he would bring to the BPW. Therefore, I would like to make a motion to approve the mayoral appointment of David Fagnon to the Board of Public Works with a term expiration of 12/31/2020.
I second that motion.
Barbara, can you please, any further discussion? We have motion is second on David Fagnon.
I'd just like to speak on David's behalf.
Okay, go ahead, JP.
I would like to speak on David's behalf to say that I know, have known him personally for many, many years. He definitely will be an asset to the committee. He's very bright, very clear-thinking, and I think is an excellent appointment. So, thank you, and definitely think that David will do very well for us.
Peg, may I say?
Council Rist?
I just wanted to say that I believe the special exemptions, which we looked at last year, cover the Board of Public Works, so his conflict of interest is covered, I believe. I'll let Barbara look into that, but I don't think he has an issue with dealing with the city. But I don't, I don't remember all the ins and outs of that, but I think the conflict of interest won't be a problem.
Okay. I believe we had a motion is second on the floor. Any further discussion? Barbara, could we please have a roll call vote?
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Gazinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye, yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
And Owen Zera?
Yes.
Council Lynch, did you have, you have some new business to move, I believe?
I do. So, just to also touch base on the two other appointments that we have, we're gonna hold off until at least the next meeting. We have until 4/4 to move on those, so we should, we should be okay and covered on that. I have eight new appointments to move forward. I'm gonna make one motion, and I'm gonna call, cover all eight, please. A motion to move the following appointments to the Appointments Committee. Jennifer Gallant to the Retirement Board, Term Expiration 12/31/2022. Hillary Smith to the East Hampton City Arts, Term Expiration 12/31/2022. Mary Lou Dodge to the National Economic Palm Committee, Term Expiration 12/31/2021. Jeffrey Brown to the Commission of Disability, Term Expiration 12/31/20. Robert Nicholas to the Commission of Disability, Term Expiration 12/31/21. Bryce Lowpoint to the Commission of Disability on 12/31/2021. Neil Hyde to the Veterans Council, Term Expiration 12/31/2021. Scott Wintersman to the Energy Advisory Committee, Term Expiration 12/31/2022.
Second.
We have a motion is second to move these appointments to the Appointment Subcommittee. Again, I'm taking executive privilege, and on this particular motion, we can take a voice vote, since we're moving it just to a committee. So, if you could all please unmute, is there any further discussion on moving these to a committee? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
Thank you. And the next meeting is still gonna be pending, to be scheduled, given the grounds of everything we need to figure out, and thus concludes.
Thank you, Council Lynch. Council Derby, ordinance. Did we lose Counselor Derby?
No, I'm here. I was still muted. Thank you, Madam President. The Ordinance Committee did meet on the 11th. We discussed the plastic bag ordinance with a lot of information. It was well-attended, and we made a lot of progress. So, we, once we figure out how we can meet, I think we're gonna continue forward progress on that. Our next meeting was scheduled for the 25th. At this point, I think it's probably for us to not have a hard-fast next meeting until we can figure out how to do it appropriately. And we did have a public hearing that was scheduled for April 1st, and I'm gonna just push that forward to the next meeting. It sounds like that's what we did with the other one, so we can figure out how to get public input.
Okay.
I can do that in the form of a motion, I believe it's the 18th, April?
15th, April 15th.
15th, yeah, sorry. Tax Day.
Second, or...
Motion and a second to move the public hearing on open consumption of alcohol and cannabis from April 1st to April 15th. Barbara? Can you please take a roll?
Oh, quick point of clarification.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did we have any further conversation? I apologize.
Just that this is for just alcohol, and we're still discussing cannabis.
Oh, okay. So, it's just for alcohol. Thank you for that.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Okay, Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Gazinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
And Owen Zera?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstained? Motion passes. Any, I'm sorry, anything else, Counsel Derby?
Nope, that concludes. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Zera, property?
Hi, we have not met since the last meeting. The status of any upcoming meeting was dependent on the Parks and Rec Commission meeting. They were supposed to meet... They were supposed to meet tonight, actually, to discuss the proposed site by the pond for a potential, for us to allow us to evaluate that as a potential site for a dog park. So I'm waiting to see when they're able to meet for us to set another meeting. And we do have a public hearing, I think, on the 15th, so that's very well going to get continued. At this point, based on everything that's going on, I think we should certainly try to move that out even farther. I'm even thinking sometime to the middle of May, based on everything that's going on, and in terms of how important or this is of a topic in terms of the overall hierarchy of the city, I think this is probably low on our agenda. So, sorry, I'm just looking at my calendar.
May 20th, it's May 20th.
So, thank you, thank you, President Coniff. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion, just in terms of clearing our plate a little bit, to move the, that public hearing to May 20th.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second to move the public hearing for the dog park to May 20th. Barbara, could I ask for a roll call vote?
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Aye.
Anything else, Counselor Zera?
The, so this is obviously pending, the Parks Commission being able to meet, so I'll update you if they are able to meet in April, and we can go from there. As you're aware, there were some reasonable questions at the last meeting about the status or other agenda item. I did submit some informative materials to the packet this week, just to kind of update where we are in regards to what's happened since that was initially submitted and where some other projects have gone, such as the downtown visioning and visioning for the schools. And I don't really need to go into a lengthy explanation, but if anyone has any questions about that, I can entertain them right now.
Okay.
No questions? Okay, so we will set, the, a future meeting is still pending, once I find out more about when Parks and Rec meets, and thus concludes.
Thank you, Counselors Zera.
Hey, interject. Madam President?
Sure.
I don't think you formally acknowledged the vote on the hearing change for the...
Oh, from the roll call vote? Okay, my apologies. Motion passes for the public hearing, May 20th. Thank you. Okay, rules and government relations. Counselor Peak?
Thank you, Madam President. We met on the 12th and discussed the Administrative Code 20-1, which has some amendments to East Hampton City Arts. I'd like to actually move on that tonight, because I think it's fairly straightforward. What it essentially does is it changes the name to just be East Hampton City Arts, as well as changes the number of members from, I believe it was 15, down to nine. My understanding is that that very large number was sort of a relic of that committee being formed, and the name, the ECA Plus, were both relics of that committee being formed by like a merger of several committees. But at this point, you know, just trying to get a reasonable number of people into the room and have a reliable quorum necessitated this administrative order. So the Rules and Government Relations Committee approved this three to zero. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to...
I have to, that's an administrative code, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
To approve those, right?
No, they need public hearings.
Oh, those need a public hearing? Okay, we were going back and forth about that. In that case, I would like to set a public hearing.
Okay.
For April 15th?
Yeah, I guess April 15th.
Okay, and then we'll continue it if we are unable to technologically get the public to participate in that. So is that a motion? Do we need a vote?
Yes. I'll make that as a motion to set a public hearing for April 15th, for the 21.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, to set the public hearing for 4/15 for the Administrative Code 20-1. Barbara, could we ever, any further discussion? Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Aye.
Counselor Peak, there is one piece of new business, I believe.
Yes, yes, I was about to say that. I'd like to move the proposal from Counselor Lynch to adopt a payment in lieu of taxes resolution to Rules and Government Relations.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to move the payment in lieu of taxes resolution to the Rules and Government Relations Committee. Any discussion?
Second.
Counselor Lynch?
Yes, I just wanted to go through it real quick, just for everybody's knowledge. You know, the purpose of the payment in lieu of taxes is for municipalities to seek out tax-like payments for property owners, tax-exempt property owners. Under this program, the tax-exempt organizations are asked to voluntarily pay a percentage of their taxes that they would pay for real estate taxes if they were fully taxed on the value of their property, up to 25%. This is to cover services, police, fire, EMS, and other services provided from the city that they can benefit from. The pilot program allows the mayors to negotiate with the tax-exempt organizations and come up to an agreed-upon payment for the services, taking into account in-kind donations that they may already offer to the city. This program only requires a resolution with the city council's endorsement, as it's voluntary and not subject to the city ordinance under existing state law. It is important for the mayor to know that they have our support from the East Hampton City Council. In the description, I have outlined the largest property owners that is tax-exempt. It is nothing against that organization. I just use them as an example of the dollar amounts and the benefits, the potential benefits to the city. In times like these, when the city needs another option to help offset the burden of tax increases, every little bit helps. This would allow our mayor to have a new approach to generate revenue for the city. I did send a revision on the property values. Immaculate conception, the tax rate and the 25% were offset by a decimal place. I did re-total everything, and it did not change the totals, as I took the total and then balanced it out with a formula at the end of the property value, so it did not affect the totals. And then I would like to read the resolution as it stands. Whereas the city of East Hampton has a lot of tax-exempt organizations that support the community through education, social services, arts, religion, businesses, and other services provided, but taxes...
Counselor Lynch, hold on one second. Someone has a point of order. Who said that?
I did. Counselor Lynch, this isn't necessary. I think it should be read when it's brought back from the Rules Committee.
Sure.
I don't think it's necessary or in order, because we did mention to several people, I think President Coniff had a conversation with one of them, that we would not discuss this this evening. So that's my...
My only comment on that would be that reading this is not a discussion, it's really getting it into the record, but it is in the record by virtue of being in the packet. So, you know, I can go either way on this if we feel that...
I'm fine.
You're good?
I'm fine with it. Yep, I'm good.
I would just like to interject that I, just for the record, that I think that Counselor Lynch was just simply introducing the language for any question. I agree, it's in the written record, but I don't see an issue why this is necessarily out of order, but I'll yield to Counselor Lynch on the floor.
Yeah, whatever.
I would support that comment by Counselor Zera and your decision.
Yeah, so Bill, if you want to read it, I think we have our support.
I do. Okay, I'll finish. Whereas the total value of the tax-exempt-owned property according to the most current appraisal is $110,279,400, the pilot program would allow the mayor to negotiate up to 25% of the tax rate value, adding $489,640.54 to the income of our city. Whereas municipal cities in Massachusetts receive payments because of the pilot program, Springfield, Northampton, Boston, and other already benefit from this pilot program. Boston is the most successful city, and in 2019 raised $86,684,703. Whereas the East Hampton Pilot Program would be based off of the most current real estate assessment data, including any relevant information provided to the office of the assessors by the tax-exempt institutions. Whereas, the current tax rate increase would have been lower, provided the city had a pilot program in its place. A lot of residents have the hardship in relation to the property tax increases. This will help take, mitigate, this will help take, mitigate some of that by having the tax-exempt properties pay for the services provided. Whereas, there may be different tax-exempt organizations within different purposes, like education, religion, housing, social services, government, to name a few. The only restriction on the East Hampton Pilot Program would be government-owned properties. Now therefore be resolved that the city council accept this East Hampton Pilot Program. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lynch. So that was in the form of a motion. We are, we have a motion in a second to move this to the Rules and Government Relations Committee. Any further conversation?
Just...
Please, one at a time, please.
Who would you like?
Go ahead, Dan.
I just wanted to thank Counselor Lynch. The amount of work that he's put into this is extraordinary, and I look forward to debating it with the property owners who are involved. Thank you.
Counselor Zera, did you have a comment?
Yes, I, Counselor Rist, BB2, and I just wanted to commend Counselor Lynch for doing his research, for providing us with the appropriate figures so that we could consider sending this forward. Thank you.
And Counselor Derby, did you have anything?
Yeah, I just, I would echo those sentiments. I think the only thing I would add is education expenses are one of the biggest ones, and they just didn't get mentioned yet. So I'm sure that will get looked at as we go through.
Absolutely. Okay. Barbara, could I ask, please, for a roll call vote?
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Kozinski?
Yes.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
And Owen Zera?
Yes.
We have a full complement of ayes, no abstentions, no negatives, so this will be moved to the Rules and Government Relation Committee. Motion passes.
Great. And as far as rules, we have two more things on our agenda, which are two amendments to the city council rules. If it's all right with you, Madam President, I'd prefer to hold off on deliberating on those until we have sort of a better, until, like a better grasp on this whole system, because I anticipate that there's potentially going to be some debate and some questions and some proposed amendments. And just once we've got a better grasp on how this all goes, that might be a little bit smoother, and I don't think either of them are especially time-sensitive.
Right, okay.
So that's, if that's...
Can I ask for a clarification? What date did you set for the public hearing? The next meeting?
I believe we did April 15th, so that's four weeks from now.
Okay, okay.
And so thus concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Peak. We look like we've taken care of all the old business and the new business. However, I know the City Clerk has an item on here for the warrant for the, perhaps it will take place, March 31st, special state election. What's the disposition of that, Barbara, and how do you want it handled? For the warrant?
Tell me. I would appreciate a vote to approve it, but as far as the signatures, I don't know.
Okay. We'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
Didn't think about that one.
Can we do like curb-side signing?
Yeah, we might have to. Drive by.
We could send the documents along, I assume.
Okay, hang on, guys. Let's make a motion, then, to approve the warrant for the March 31st special state election. Could I please have someone make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the warrant for the special state election. Is there any further discussion?
I just have something I'd like to mention in general about this. If it does occur, I know at the last election, just a few weeks ago, there were, at the nighttime, almost impossible to see the driveway in the parking lot at Whitebrook. For anyone who voted at Whitebrook, it was hazardous. I don't know what resources are available, if any, but I was thinking that it might be helpful to have lighting. I know the fire department has lighting. If we're going to do that, we'd like to make it a safe situation.
We've had conversations about that, the clerk and I, and I know there will be more conversations about it. And yes, we will include the DPW and others in that, and I concur.
I do have to say, though, that since that last time, I mean, the light change, it's, what, quarter to seven right now, so...
We didn't hear that last part. Somebody's phone rang.
It's just going to be light later.
Okay.
Right.
So, yeah, well, that will be an item that we'll have to keep an eye on and keep conversations going, but for purposes of approving the warrant for the special state election, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Barbara, could you please do a roll call vote?
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Bill Lynch?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
And Owen Zera?
Yes.
I think that we have gone through all of the business for today. I think you've all done amazingly awesome on this. I think our first foray into virtual meetings was pretty great. Barbara, did you have something you wanted to say?
I have the, or the bill schedule. I'd like to know what you'd like to do, whether I can sign on the council's behalf, or, you know, for legal ads.
Oh.
I need to know what to do with these.
I give you the authority to sign. I don't know if that's my authority to give, but if it is, then I am fine with signing. Pardon me?
Maybe you could take a vote.
I move that Barbara be assigned the authority to sign on the council's behalf with regard to these matters.
Second.
Motion is second for Barbara to have authority to sign off on some warrants that are critical to the moving forward of some business. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Barb, can you do a roll call vote?
Yeah.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Yes.